Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, February 13, 2023. I now call the meeting to order. Now time for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask Commissioner Rojas to lead us, please.
Take the right hand of your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anna, can we do the roll call, please?
Chair Erath.
Here.
Vice Chair Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Present.
Commissioner Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Please note Commissioner Andrade is present via Zoom. Commissioner Vivar.
Present.
Commissioner Taber.
Here.
Thank you, Anna. This brings us to public comments for matters that are not listed on the agenda. Public comments will be heard at this time on items that are not listed on the agenda but are within our jurisdiction. I'll open the public comment. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium. Or if you are participating via Zoom, use the raised hand option at the bottom of the screen. And if you're joining the meeting on your phone and like to speak, please press star nine. Anna, do we have anyone online?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Or on phone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to Planning Commissioner comments and suggestions. And I think we'll start with Commissioner Taber.
Someone else go first? I don't really know what this is.
Oh, just anything that you'd like to share or talk about.
Anything?
Any comments or suggestions.
I would like to turn the Fairview Developmental Center into a entertainment and retail facility with a high-rise hotel and high-rise low-income housing. That's all.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that I'm happy to see staff again. Glad to start our meeting with our two new commissioners. I know they're getting up to speed, so glad to have Commissioner Taber and Commissioner Andrade Vallarta here. And hope that everybody had a safe Super Bowl weekend. And that's it from me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. We will move on to Commissioner Andrade.
No comments for the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Zick.
There's a suggestion I'd like to make. It's one that's come up in the past. And it's for the city to provide us and to the public visibility into officially received planning applications that they're working on. I'd like to know the address associated with the planning application, a brief title, not a full description, just a brief title, what it is, and an estimated month that it would be expected that the planning application would be heard by the Planning Commission. Finding out things on Friday for a Monday meeting, I think I'm at my limit on that and think that we deserve more visibility. The public definitely deserves more visibility, and it would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Mr. Dropkin, did you get that? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rojas.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to, in person, welcome the new commissioners, Ms. Taber and Sandra de Vallarta via Zoom, and congratulate you guys again in person for your ascension. And thank you, Commissioner Zick, for your time as a vice chair. I'd also like to ask that, I know when we are dealing with the cannabis initiatives and another, they're going to be coming up, that slide that comes in, and asking if staff could do that, is inserted as part of our package as opposed to just a quick slide because, you know, as time, as it evolves, I want to make sure we have a good snapshot and a 30,000-foot view of that graphic. I think that's one of the most helpful graphics that we have seen so far in those initiatives. Other than that, that's it. That's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rojas. Vice Chair.
Sure, thank you. I just want to give a quick shout out to the Public Works Department. I don't want to steal Mr. Yang's thunder if he's going to be sharing this later, but a couple of weeks ago, the City of Costa Mesa, I think this should make us all proud, we decided to lower the speed limits all across the city. And I want to keep driving this home as long as I can up here, that as we grow, it's so important that we get our streets right. I know we're the Planning Commission, but it's absolutely, the topics are related to each other. So as we densify and get more crowded, it's crucial that we do everything that we can to ensure that our public rights of way are safe and comfortable, and getting around without cars is convenient for as many people as possible. So huge shout out for Public Works and our city for taking the lead on that because that's a result of a change in state law, and Costa Mesa actually acted on it. We didn't have to, but we did. And so that's, that gives another sign to the rest of Orange County that we're emerging from the pack when it comes to these things. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I have nothing to share tonight other than to wish everyone an early Happy Valentine's Day, and that's all. So that brings us to our consent calendar, and we have one item on that tonight for approving the minutes. And I will open it up, starting to my right, with Commissioner Rojas, to see if you have any comments on the minutes, sir.
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Zick.
Yeah, I just had one comment. I was curious why this particular meeting's minutes are in our consent calendar package as opposed to the other maybe half dozen or more meetings from last year. So I was just curious about that. Why this one? That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. I do have an answer for that if you'd like. What we are is we're trying to really put together a system to put all of our minutes and finish them up, and Anna is actually working diligently on them. However, this meeting is, this project is coming up for an appeal in front of the council on the 21st of this month. So I wanted to get it done for the, for the city council to review the council's adopted minutes with the application. But the other ones are also, will be coming up here very shortly in probably groups of two. So, but we're still just about ready to do that, and it'll take us, it'll take us probably another meeting or so before they start, we start seeing them. And this will become a regular event again where we're asking the Planning Commission to adopt the minutes. It'll be one from, from when COVID kind of began and then one current. So we'll try to do it that way.
Is it all Commissioner Zick? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Andrade.
No comments in the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Go to Commissioner Taber.
I do not have any comments.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Vivar.
Yeah, I do have one question for staff. So for my colleagues, Commissioners Andrade Vallarta and Taber, who are new with, they be voting on these minutes as they were not present when the, they were not up on the dais when that meeting occurred. And I also would like to know for my own sake, in case in the future I have to vote on minutes for a meeting in which I was not participating. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Vivar, I do believe that the two commissioners can, can vote on that still.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair.
Just thank you. I have one little amendment, if I may. At the bottom of page three, I was just looking at the, you know, the things I said. The last sentence, second paragraph up is Commissioner Toller, the last sentence, as he said, "Much of the concerns mentioned in the meeting were misconceptions and that it was the business's owner's responsibility to figure out business planning site issues." That last line, it was about site planning issues, right? Vehicular circulation sort of issues. Thought that could be reworded to be a little less ambiguous.
Commissioner, are you?
Is that okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Vice Chair, are you saying within your comments at the bottom of page three?
Yes, not, not the Commissioner Russell one, the one above, Commissioner Toller. Sorry.
Yeah.
It's just those last four words can be moved around it. Get the point across. That's the only thing I have.
Okay, all right. Is that all, Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one, one small edit here at the bottom of page three under Commissioner Russell. In the second line, it says, "However, she said the concealing management were notified," which I believe it should be the counseling. Is that correct? Okay, so if we can change that. Okay, thanks. And that's all for me. So with that said, would anyone like to make a motion on this, please?
Motion.
Motion by?
Commissioner Vivar.
Vivar, to?
I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission accept the minutes of the October... What was the date?
November 28th.
The November 28th Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by Rojas. Tagged by Commissioner Rojas. Okay, would you like to speak to your motion, Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, having some experience here, just for the sake of the public that is following this as well as any of my colleagues who might be new to the commission, sometimes the comments that staff prepares in minutes are summaries of what was said in the meeting rather than verbatim. So just making sure that we are all keeping that in mind as we go forward. If the minutes were a bit more complete in terms of capturing what was said in the discussions, then they'd be many, many pages long. So I just wanted to put that out there for the benefit of the public to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rojas, would you like to speak to the item?
I would. This is more formality for these particular minutes. I understand that, you know, Anna's doing what she can to keep up, and therefore I'm in agreement with supporting these minutes here. My only concern actually is more on the agenda point here on the consent calendar. Of commissioners may legally approve many minutes of meetings that took place before they were appointed, obviously addressing the, the new commissioners that have joined us. And I'm okay with that, except for the part where, I want to make sure and reiterate, because I remember when I first came on board, I had Scott helping me out and all the staff, and you guys did a phenomenal job. But for the new commissioners, if there's something here that we don't, that you see that you don't understand or don't see, speak up and just let us know because we want to know that. We want to make sure that you guys are up to speed on this. It took me, I mean, it was like drinking from a fire hose here when I first started, and I'm still feeling that way at times, to find our stride. But it does say, "There are no, there are no separate discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission staff or public request specific items to be discussed." And so therefore, we're finding our authority to go ahead and develop them if there's any questions there because I'd hate for you guys to feel like you're obligated to vote on something that you don't fully understand. So that's my only comment on that. Other than that, I will be supporting the, continuing with the second in of the approval of these minutes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rojas.
Thank you.
I will go out to Zoom and see if Commissioner Andrade has any questions or any comments.
Commissioner Andrade, you're on mute.
Yep, I approve.
I'm sorry, we didn't catch that, Commissioner. What did you say?
No questions on the minutes, but I go ahead and approve as, as written.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Zick.
The minutes accurately reflect the fact that I was absent from the meeting, and I will be supporting the motion.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's see, Commissioner Taber.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, and Vice Chair.
No, that was my only. Thank you, thank you.
All right, great, thank you. And I have no questions either. So Anna, if you'd like to do the roll call, voice vote, please.
Chair Erath.
Yes.
Vice Chair Toller.
Yes.
Commissioner Rojas.
Yes.
Commissioner Zick.
Aye.
Commissioner Andrade.
Aye.
Commissioner Vivar.
Aye.
Commissioner Taber.
Abstain.
That motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Taber abstaining.
All right, thank you very much, Anna. That brings us to our public hearing item, which we only have one this evening. And Anna, if you would please read the title for the public hearing, that would be great. Thank you.
Public hearing item number one, Planning Application 23-01 to amend an existing conditional use permit, PA 22-17, to allow two outdoor playground areas for a private K through 12 school, Renaissance School International. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Thank you, Anna. We'll start to my left, Commissioner Taber.
I have not had any conversations.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vivar.
None for this item, but I have had discussions with Carrie Mazzara of Renaissance School International prior to the previous item to which this item is an addendum to, and discussions about the school after the, that meeting as well.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rojas?
I have none, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Zick.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Andrade.
None to report.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair?
No.
And I, I will say that I hold regular calls with Ms. Mazzara, the applicant, for this particular item, but I will be recusing myself. If you do recall, I recuse myself on the original CUP based off of a letter of support that I signed. So I will be stepping out on this and be handing the mic over to Vice Chair. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Akis.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. This is an amendment to an existing conditional use permit to allow two outdoor playground areas for a previously approved private K through 12 school, Renaissance School International. Under the adopted city council policies, outdoor play areas for private schools are subject to review by the project's final review authority, which is the Planning Commission. The project also includes approximately 8,000 square feet of landscape that will be upgraded in compliance with the city's landscaping standards. The project is located in the local commercial district in the city. The temporary site just operates less than a mile away. Surrounding uses also are commercial in nature. You'll see here, the subject site is outlined in red, including a shared onsite parking area. There are single-family residences to the north. Below the site is single-family residences and the Mesa Verde Shopping Center. The commission will remember the approval of the original private school on September 26 of 2022. That repurposed the existing 24-hour fitness gym building for the enrollment of up to 210 students, grades kindergarten through 12. As part of the project, onsite vehicle circulation was proposed and the hows or operation as shown on your screen. Condition of approval number 10 required that the applicant return to the commission once the outdoor play area plans became more final. At that stage in September, they weren't quite ready, so that's what the application is before you. The council guidelines for the outdoor play areas circulate around safety and adequacy of private school standards, including traffic barriers, noise, hours, maximum students, and also compliance with state safety standards. Here's a look at the existing conditions. Again, the previous use was a gym. The photo on your right is where the outdoor playground areas will be installed. In between the playground areas, as you'll see shortly, is a connective pathway. And this drive out here will also be used for pickup and drop off. Here's a look at the site plan, calling out play area one and two in blue. There's also the outdoor staff area in orange. The purple areas are outdoor lunch areas for students. There was a slight revision in the, in the staff report to reflect the student lunch areas here. So what you're seeing on your screen is the most current version. And in the yellow, you'll see protective traffic barrier around the play areas adjacent to the drive aisles. Also notable in red is the indoor gym that will also be used in conjunction with the outdoor play areas, offering more space for play. In a look at the project renderings, this play structure is specifically for grades three through five. And this is a look at the K through second play structure. In a look at the K through second play structure, as you'll see, there's different musical opportunities with a xylophone, double physical slides that are non-metal, a rock climbing component, tic-tac-toe panel. For the third through fifth grade, there is a non-metal slide, a climbing wall, and other climbing opportunities here. Here is a look at the compliance with the council-adopted outdoor play areas. There is an in-depth analysis in your staff report. This is meant to be an abridged version that you see on your screen. You'll see that the, the two deviations are for the minimum play areas and the minimum distance from hazards, including streets. In regards to the minimum outdoor play area, the total suggested play area is around 27,500 square feet, whereas 3,400 square feet is proposed. However, staff is in support of the proposal because there is staggered break schedule and also use of the indoor gym. The cool, the, excuse me, the school currently operates with similarly sized outdoor play areas at their existing location, and no issues have been observed. It should also be noted that the council-adopted criteria specifies suggestions, and it's not necessarily codified or requirements. So there is latitude for the commission if they find appropriate to deviate from the standards as they see fit. The second deviation requested is the minimum 50-foot distance from hazards. Portions of the play area are adjacent to the parking lot drive aisle. However, as required, there will be a 42-inch block wall that will adequately serve the play area from vehicle traffic. And the nearest public road is located over 85 feet away on Adams. We will see that the project is largely in compliance with the intent and spirit of the outdoor play areas as adopted by council. It's sensitive to residential uses and its location and design with adequate use of shading. There's traffic barrier protections in place. As shown on the exhibits, there's diverse play experiences and graduated challenges that are age-appropriate and inclusive. And as part of the conditions of approval for the original school, there's a maximum of 30 students on the playground at any one time. In order for the commission to approve the project, the findings for conditional use permits must be met, that the project is substantially compatible, it's not detrimental, and that it also complies with the general plan policies. Conditions of approval are included, and there are even some existing from the original approval. Those proposed are in line with the council-adopted standards, including treated surfaces, nighttime activities being subject to review by the Community Development Director, and no nighttime lighting. From the previous approval, carrying forward the maximum number of children in outdoor play areas as mentioned, the enclosures being compliant, and also adhering to state law. Staff does recommend approval of the project and that you find the project categorically exempt under the existing facilities and infill development exemptions. And the applicant, Carrie Mazzara of Renaissance School International, is here and available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Akis. Questions for staff? We'll start with Commissioner Rojas.
I don't really have any questions for this. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Zick.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Akis, for your very thorough presentation. Again, you do a good job of these. Got a couple of questions for you. Starting on the staff report, page eight, you've got a table that I think is excellent in terms of addressing each of the council requirements, maybe I should say guidelines or suggestions, that'd probably be a better term. And when I compared the list of council guidelines to yours, it looked to me like a couple were missing, and I didn't understand why. And I'll address them specifically. So, and I'm referring to what was attachment nine in our September 26 approval package. There is a item A4, which speaks to the fact that the playground equipment should demonstrate compliance with State of California safety guidelines. And it goes on and provides additional detail about, about that. Can you tell me if you address that somewhere? Because I don't see that.
Thank you, Commissioner. The table was meant to be a summary. As you've pointed out, there are a few of the council policies that are not listed in the table. However, the playground plan is compliant with that, as confirmed by the applicant and stated in the applicant letter in the staff report. There is compliance with State of California playground requirements, and there is a condition to, a prior before final to have the certification from the state.
There's, you said there's a requirement for that? Is that in the conditions of approval? Because I don't see it.
Just a moment. For the conditions of approval, for the first project of the school, there's condition of approval number 11 that talks about the applicant submitting a letter to the Planning Division stating that the play equipment installation has been inspected by a person authorized by the manufacturer and that it meets the manufacturer's specification and that it complies with the minimum playground safety adopted by the State of California.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you for the question.
Okay, and I do like that the condition of approval number one references Planning Application 22-17, which kind of begged a question in my mind when I looked through these conditions of approval for this application. A number of the items were duplicative. And I just wondered if that was intentional or unintentional. It seems that it's a matter of practice. You, you don't want to be doing that. You don't have to respond if you don't want to.
Thank you, Commissioner, for putting that. It may appear cumbersome. A lot of the conditions are standard and in place as re- A lot of the conditions are standard and in place as reinforcement. Of course, with the condition of approval number one of the application before you, all the conditions will carry forward. So it's a belt and suspender, so to speak, for the conditions.
Okay, I just note that some of those conditions of approval from September 26th are not in this list of conditions of approval, while others are. And I think that's what I found to be a little bit awkward. Okay, but moving on. My next question has to do with conditions of approval number five and six. Five indicates that nighttime school activities in the outdoor play yard area would be allowed, subject to an approval. But then number six says there shall be no nighttime lighting except for security purposes. So I'm wondering, from a practical standpoint, how it could be that we would allow nighttime activities in the outdoor play area when we do not allow nighttime lighting?
Thank you, Commissioner. So as noted by condition of approval number five, any type of activities outside of the approved hours would be subject to the review and approval by the Director of Economic and Development Services. Part of that could also be consideration for special event lighting. But the general spirit of condition of approval number six is that there's not any permanent lighting that could otherwise create blight or other nuisances to the adjacent properties, including the residences.
So the intention with number five is that temporary lighting could be part of the approved nighttime activity that requires director approval?
That's correct. Each request would be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. And the lighting, if proposed by the applicant, would be vetted at that time and assured that there wouldn't be any impacts to residences.
Okay, probably number five would probably be a little clearer if it identified the fact that temporary lighting could be part of the nighttime activity plan, again, subject to a review. It really implies that no nighttime lighting is allowed, according to number six. So I just think number five maybe could use a little bit of cleanup.
Commissioners, the comments are appreciated, and they are directly from the council-adopted policies.
I understand that. So maybe if we've got some city council members listening, they might look at that and recognize that it isn't as clear as it could be.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And if you don't believe it's as clear as it could be, you're always welcome to bring it to their attention as well. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Andrade Vayarta. Questions for staff?
No, no questions for staff. It seems really well summarized. I appreciate the details on how we're addressing the non-compliance section. So I think it's great. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vivar.
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. First off, thank you for the great presentation, very thorough, as always. I do want to ask about the fact that this proposed playground is basically, will deviate from the requirements, distance requirements between the playground and hazards, specifically the drive aisle. So I know that the dimension, vertical dimension of this proposed wall is 42 inches, but I'm wondering about the thickness of the wall and about how many feet into the ground it extends, and the thickness of the wall as well. And the reason I ask about this is because I'm not a structural engineer, but I'm curious about the resistance, design resistance of the wall to any kind of impact load from a vehicle.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. That is an excellent question. It was one of the questions that I sort of thought of as well when we were reviewing this request. And basically, from speaking to the building department, they're going to be, and they will check for the wall conditions, that it is in fact a reinforced wall and designed with foundations that are more or less applicable to the vehicle protection that's required with the one-way circulation of that parking lot. And primarily, that parking lot will function in that area as a drop-off area during heavy-use locations with extensive amount of employees sort of monitoring the parking lot area. But more closer to your question, that we will be requesting that the structural wall be looked at and sort of be developed in a way that is consistent with that vehicle speed and potential vehicle hit for protection issues.
Right, because I do understand that that is the main purpose of that wall. So that wall, then, the reinforcement would be, would that be reviewed by our city engineer prior to final approval of the design, the proposed design for the play area?
Yeah, I think what we probably were thinking about doing was at least getting it through our structural review from a private property perspective, our building department, and then moving it closer to, advancing it to a recommendation review from the city's engineering department as well. Normally, the city's engineering department focuses on structures in the right-of-way, but I think here they can add some information and be helpful.
Sure, great. And one other question that came to my mind as I was thinking about this item that I didn't see any information about in the staff report was about any potential gates or doors around the rest of the perimeter of the play area. So I'm wondering about how many gates are proposed at this perimeter fence area and whether they are, will be conditioned to be closed at all times during school hours and whether, for example, they can only be opened from the inside rather than from the outside.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. The applicant would have a few more details on that. All of the playgrounds are enclosed with at least a six-foot protective gate, including the 42-inch block wall for the traffic protection around the drive aisles. Just taking a look at the plans, it looks like there's around three gates, two serving the play area located closest to Adams, and then one at the second playground. And I imagine during non-operating hours that those would be closed to prevent any trespassing.
Well, not only during non-operating hours, but I'm concerned about, I mean, I think in the kind of world we live in now, I'm concerned about trespassing and intruders during school hours as well. So if any kind of, I guess, safeguards against anyone being able to access the play area and the school via any gates open directly to the, I guess, to the outside world rather than directly from the building to the play area.
Of course, and I'm sure the applicant can speak most intimately to that.
Sure. All right, thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tabor.
Hey, man, I didn't catch your name. We did the proposal thing.
I'm Patrick. Patrick Akis.
Dude, you're so good at this. You're so articulate, so clear. Thank you. I think that we're lucky to have you working for the city. So thanks for that. Hey, so it said 30 kids on the playground at one time. Is that utilizing both spaces at one time, or is it 30 per playground?
Correct. It's 30 in each play area.
Seems like a long line for the slide. Scott, am I right?
And that's just intended to be a maximum. That's not necessarily a suggested amount of.
Is that another 30 kids in the gym?
I'm not sure how the applicant intends to use the indoor gym. It is a bigger space, so there's more opportunity for students there. It's also geared toward the students above sixth grade.
Seems a little tight, is all I'm gonna say. Okay, Mr. Chairman, vice chairman, chairman, acting chairman.
Okay, I have some, a couple of simple questions. First, in the conditions of approval, I want to say, because I know sometimes these are boilerplate and they carry over from one project to the next. So I just want to point out for the record, number 16 and 19 are great, and I hope that they continue in subsequent similar projects. So 16 is that the ugly utility stuff is in the back of the project and not facing the street. And then number 19 is, I guess, the suggestion, which is as good as we can do, that mature trees be retained to the extent possible. Number 20, all landscaped areas shall be separated from paved vehicular areas by a six-inch-high continuous Portland cement concrete curving. What's the need for that? I know it's kind of a surprise, weird question to ask, if anybody knows.
You know, that's a standard condition, as I recall. And it has been in our, we've revised our standard conditions, and I'll make sure that those other two that you mentioned are in there, as you indicated. With regards to that one, I want to say that there might be some requirements for water quality containment to keep the water to where it percolates downward in landscapers. That might be a possibility. Without knowing for sure, though, just want to be clear, I don't know for sure. The other requirement that I could think of that really stands out for me, why this would be a standard condition, and again, me taking a guess at it, I just want to make sure you're clear that it's a guess, would be to prevent soil and erosion from getting into the right-of-way or our drainage areas. So that would be my best guess. It is possible that Sun could help us with that one. He might know.
Vice Chairman, Mr. Drapkin is correct. So in addition to what he said, it's also for drainage issues as well, for maintaining drainage, erosion control, and those are the primary reasons. And also as a barrier to vehicles as they come approach so they won't go trespass into these landscaped areas. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I feel like I just have to ask about this, similar to what Commissioner Tabor was asking about, the minimum private school play areas. I'm hesitant to ask because I don't really think it's too much of our problem to solve. But given the guidelines, we're way under. So I'm trying to figure out where the guidelines came from. I saw in the 20-year-old council ordinance for suggested amounts of open area per kid. Do we know that, what kind of weight that carries? Why it's so high, given the fact that we're coming in so low?
Yes, I'm not sure of the exact genesis of those numbers. It was formulated in the early 2000s. The intent was, public schools do have standards for minimum outdoor play areas. As we know, private schools are not regulated as similarly to public schools. And in this case, the applicant has a little bit more flexibility with their break times, as shown in their applicant letter. So part of that criteria is just to assess whether or not what's proposed is acceptable. So again, staff is of the opinion that the area is adequate, especially in light of those staggered times and the different play spaces.
Okay, thank you. And I will say, one thing that caught my attention was the fact that it is staggered. The thing that popped up in my mind is, well, if I live close, am I going to hear screaming kids all day long? But just to say thanks for addressing that problem in the staff report, you preempted it. I will, any other questions for staff? I will open the public hearing and invite the applicant to come down. If you have anything you'd like to share with us, it's up to you. And if you may, state your name for the record and say whether you've read the staff report and conditions of approval, and whether you agree. One second. We gotta turn your mic on. Should light up.
Testing. Good evening, planning commissioners, staff. Thank you so much again for your time, and thank you for your hard work, staff, and your support, planning commissioners. I just wanted to address that playground issue really quickly. We also have a small class size, and for that reason, the smaller playground also fits us. So we, maximum each class will have 18 students. So that 30 students' space is plenty for us. So that hopefully explains it for you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I do. I just wanted to address the follow-up on the point that Commissioner was making, Vivar, regarding the 42-inch one. I know Scott was talking about that, but what are your plans on that? I was going to ask you that question before it was asked, but I'm sure you're going to be responsible with it. And I know I see in the good faith that you've done so. Can you tell us what your plan is for that? Of course, our concern, as sure as yours, is the safety of the children involved, so.
Absolutely, and that's, actually, I want to answer the question about the gates, too. So we intend to fully close all the doors and the gate during the school hours. So that will be fully, we want to fully lock down during the day. So in terms of the materials and the thickness of the wall, I don't have an answer for you right now. But whatever the requirement is, we plan to comply, so.
No questions?
Any other questions?
Yes, I do, Mr. Vice Chairman. So, Ms. Mazera, thank you for being here today. Good to see you, and thank you for preemptively answering my question about the gates. So I know that you currently operate a school already in the city. So I don't know what the gates look like for the current playground situation compared to this one. But would you have, or does your current location, and would this location have gates that are, I don't know, only, that can only be opened from the inside, or how does that work? How do you make sure that they remain closed during school hours?
Thank you, Commissioner. That is a good question. We're actually getting an upgrade at the 1600 Adams. So at that location, we will have gates fully enclosed and automatically closed behind the staff. Our current location do not have a fully enclosed gate. It is open partly, but we have hired a security guard throughout the day. So he does walk the premises, but it's still not going to be the same as when we move to the new location where it's fully enclosed.
Right, and so how many gates would be, I guess, accessible from any part outside of the building to the parking lot, to the, sorry, to the playground area?
There will be three total, two on the south side of the playground, and then one on the north. That's the design currently.
Okay, and so I'm guessing the only ones that have keys to this are staff members?
Correct.
Again, they make sure to always close it behind them and remains closed during office, during school hours, and only staff can access those gates, correct?
That's right, that's right. We even had a discussion about possibly an alarm sounding gate. So we are considering that.
Sure. All right, I think that puts my concerns about the gate access to rest. So thank you for your time today and for being here to answer your questions. And that's it for me, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mazera. Oh, one more question?
I'm sorry, I apologize, but you know, when Commissioner Vivar said something, it triggered something. I'm looking at, I was looking at the overall planning, and I see that you have two lunch areas, one in the front and one in the back. Adjacent, the one in the front is obviously adjacent. It looks like it's a three-table seating area. Tell us about that. What are you doing for that security? And you know, somebody sitting down, having a meal. What is the protection that we have around that? It's not on here, but I'm just curious about that, if you don't mind answering that.
The tables are fully inside the gates, and it's for recess and lunch hours for the students so that they don't have to always be inside the classroom. We have staff fully be with them 100% of the time. We have staff fully, be with them 100% of the time. So whenever our students are around campus, it's 100% supervised.
But is it also enclosed in the 42-inch wall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
All right, any more questions for staff? Commissioner Tabor?
I'd just like to say that this looks awesome. Like, 24-hour fitness looks so ugly. And I'm so looking forward to you guys revitalizing this property and all the hard work you're putting into it. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, thank you. I believe it will be an upgrade, so we're looking forward to it too. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. I will open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please come forward to the podium. And Ms. Partita, do we have anybody on Zoom?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, in that case, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve, planning application 22. 2301, subject to conditions of approval. And the planning commission, and I move that the planning commission also find that the the project is exempt from sequa requirements. I don't know what the exact language is, but staff, you can correct me if I'm missing anything for my motion. Thank you.
I think we're good. Do we have a second? Okay, seconded by Commissioner Rojas. Commissioner Vivar, the floor is yours for comments on the motion.
Yes, I am happy to approve the project, the project's addition of the playground. I am glad that the school has thought of an outdoor play area for the students as I think it's healthy for any child to have opportunities to play outside and not simply be indoors all day. So I am glad that the school is going to be doing that and found a creative way to do that on the limited space on site. So, and I'm also happy to hear about the safety considerations that the applicant is considering taking for the new playground area. And I am also glad to hear about the staggered break times as I, I think some of my commissioner colleagues were concerned about there not being sufficient space on site for the children to enjoy themselves and have enough space to play. So I do think that the staggered times are a great idea, and I know those were part of the original application. And so I am happy to support this project, and good luck.
Commissioner Rojas, any thoughts, comments?
Just appreciate the applicant's willingness to ensure the safety, of course. Goes without saying, being an education facility, make sure the safety is there for the students, and that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments on the motion? Commissioner Zick?
So you know I enthusiastically supported your project back in September, so I'll be supporting this motion as well. All these guidelines from council for play areas are just that, they're guidelines. There aren't any shalls, there's only shoulds. And it looks like you've made an attempt to address each and every one of those shoulds in your planning, including this wall, which we focused on. Your plan shows it quite clearly, not only where it is, but what it is. 42-inch-high concrete mason or unit wall with the balance up to six feet, which is what's required, to be ornamental iron or composite plank material. So you've really considered everything in your planning. I appreciate that. There is a challenge, obviously, with the outdoor play area. Of course, your focus isn't to have a sports academy. It's a different kind of a focused school. But outdoor play areas for kids this age is still important. Small class size doesn't explain small play area, per se, because the guidelines are a square foot per person. So it's all proportional. And based on the number of students you have, this is significantly lower than what is in the guideline. That all said, I'm a believer in school choice, and if parents feel like your facility and your program is meeting the needs of their child, they'll stay enrolled there. And if not, they'll most likely tell you that, and they'll tell you why, and then you can make adjustments or plans accordingly if you choose. This concern, a question about supervision or safety of the kids in the playground area, I think you're pretty clear on that point too in your operational plan, where you indicate a student-to-teacher ratio during the academic instruction of 18 to 1. And then you also say during breaks, it's 30 to 1. Now, you don't say 30 to 0, you say 30 to 1. It means there's going to be an adult present. It doesn't guarantee safety, but it does indicate there is supervision. So I applaud you for considering that as well. I'll support the motion.
Any other comments on the motion? Commissioner Andrade Vayarta?
No, no other comments.
Okay, I am also in support of the motion. Is there anything else I need to say? Okay, I'm in support of the motion, and I guess we're ready for roll call.
Vice Chair Toller?
Yes.
Commissioner Rojas?
Aye.
Commissioner Zick?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrade?
Aye.
Commissioner Vivar?
Aye.
Commissioner Tabor?
Yes.
That motion carries 6-0 with Chair Erith recused.
Okay, thank you. That decision is final unless appealed to the city council within seven days. Thank you. And I will invite Chair Erith back up to the dais.
Thank you. The door was locked. Vice Chair, thank you so much. I thought you did a great job. I was watching everyone back there. Thanks to everyone. So with that said, we have come to, let's see here, old business. And there is no old business or new business, and we will move on to departmental reports, starting with Mr. Yang from Public Services.
Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the planning commission, good evening. For the public works department updates, our department is proud to announce that the city is preparing to launch the updated residential permit program. And come this Thursday, February 23rd, there will be a town hall via Zoom at 6:00 PM. So information about this program can be found in the city's website. And you can join by calling in at 669-444-9171 and enter the Zoom protocol to enter and basically participate in this town hall event regarding this important residential permit parking program. In addition to this, I'd like to also mention that at the intersection of Newport Boulevard and Industrial Way, the new crosswalk has been completed, new crosswalk across Newport Way has been constructed, as well as new pedestrian heads, a new bulbout curb return. And lastly, a leading pedestrian interval has also been programmed. We also like to thank Caltrans for their assistance in this matter, because it is a Caltrans-maintained traffic signal. And with their cooperation, we're able to make this a resounding success. So that completes our department's overview, and I defer back to the chair. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much, Mr. Yang. Mr. Dropkin for Development Services?
Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. Just wanted to mention that on Wednesday night, the city council will be holding a special study session, which will focus on the Development Services Department. There'll be many, the report is posted online. If you want to look at it, it has a really good summary of what the department looks like with regards to staffing, how the staffing manages certain projects. But most importantly, it goes into, for what the planning commission's concern might be, is what our special projects are coming up. So there's a large list of them. And then at the next planning commission, we're going to dive into a little bit of those projects on the list. But if the planning commission is interested, it's posted online. I can also provide it to you and forward it to you if you'd like. But there's a lot of projects on there. It includes updates that are mandatory from the housing element and the 50 programs that mostly will come through the planning commission at one time or another. It includes projects like the Fairview Development Center, which is, which there's been a grant provided to the city for planning efforts for that and numerous other efforts that we can talk about at the next PC hearing.
Right, thank you so much, Mr. Dropkin. And yes, if you could circulate that for the Wednesday meeting, that would be fantastic. Quick side question, do you happen to know when we're going to be hearing the pedestrian master plan? Or have an idea about when?
Actually, at this time, I do not know when the pedestrian master plan will be brought to the planning commission. We have been focusing on some of the other plans that are more of a priority based on some state requirement or mandate. And then, once we get through with those, we'll probably be bringing that one forward. I know that transportation has been chomping at the bit, so to speak, to get this thing done. And they have a pretty good plan that's, for the most part, ready. And, but we just haven't had the ability to sort of bring it to process at this point.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Dropkin. City attorney report, Mr. Prezioci.
Chair Erith, no report this evening.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Take care.